Call a meeting to order. We do have a quorum. First thing on the list is 2021 Board Reorganization. Due to conditions and stuff going on within our board. I think we're gonna leave the organization as is. I will remain Chair. And Mark will take as Vice Chair for the time being.
So make a motion to appoint AJ as Chair.
Okay, if there's a motion to appoint me as Chair, I will second that motion.
You can't really abstain.
I have a choice, so. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, motion will carry, and I'll make a motion to appoint Marcus maybe as Vice Chair.
I'll second.
Alright, motion is second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. Now, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes.
So moved.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. Okay, resolution. Twenty twenty-one dot oh one dot oh four dot oh two. Authorization of staff positions in the County Sheriff's Office and improvement appointments to those positions.
Let's start with appointments first. Rich Brum is engineer, and then there's a whole paragraph about him, and then there's a whole paragraph about her, a little paragraph about me being authorized to pay bills during a meeting and all that good stuff. Rich, reappoint.
Rich Brum's County Engineer.
Yeah.
Second motions.
Yeah.
Okay.
If that's a motion to appoint Rich Brum as County Engineer, I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Roll calls, maybe?
Aye.
Stone, aye. Motion will pass.
Okay, and then he is authorized and empowered on behalf of Worth County Supervisors to execute the certification of completion of work and plan of acceptance with plans and specs. Therefore, in connection with all farm-to-market construction projects in the county, adopt a resolution to comply with provisions of the nineteen seventy Uniform Reallocation Assistance and Land Acquisition Policies Act as amended by a title for the Surface Transportation and Uniform Relocation Assistance Act of nineteen eighty-seven that in accordance with the County Engineer Recommendation that for secondary roads project, right-of-way payments be three and a half times a hundred percent valuation, fence removed. And you guys tell me if you want anything different on these. Fence removed be eighteen dollars a rod for barbed wire, thirty-two a rod for woven wire. Crop damage be nine fifty for corn, seven hundred for all other crops. Is that still fair?
Yeah.
Seems, does seem fair, but what prices are these?
It was probably fairer before, and now it's probably fair.
Yeah, it was probably too fair before, for last year anyway, but for this year, it's
seems right.
Yeah, right now, you're probably looking at, if you're lucky, a thousand plus dollars an acre of residue on corn, but.
Right.
That's really good.
That'd be really good, more than a good price, but I would say it's acceptable, so I will make that a motion to.
Alright, there's a motion to approve
Yeah.
all the pricing and authority for County Engineer. And I will second that motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, the motion will carry.
Okay, then on me, it's just authorizing me, or no, that's later, nevermind. Next, the resolutions, and this is something new. It was brought to my attention that we should have been that our, our staff needed to be approved by the board. So that's basically what these two say.
So the sheriff's staff, right now?
Okay.
Read that, or you?
No. I think we'll just take a motion as resolution twenty twenty-one dot oh one dot oh four dot oh two. Approving the staff positions for the Sheriff's Office.
I will make that a motion.
Alright, and I will second the motion on this resolution. Roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
Stone, aye, that motion will pass. And resolution twenty twenty-one dot oh one dot oh four dot oh three is the authorization of the staff of the Auditor's Office.
I will make that a motion.
Alright, there's a motion to approve that resolution. I will second that motion. The roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
Stone, aye, that motion will carry.
That one's a lot shorter.
Okay.
And this is where that authorization.
Authorization.
It is for me to pay bills during a meeting adjournment, salary and payroll previously approved by the board, insurance payments and unemployment quarterly report payments, emergency expenses deemed necessary by the county auditor.
So, you motion to approve the auditor's authorization.
Alright, there's a motion to approve auditor's authorization of payments. I will second that motion. Roll call votes, maybe?
Aye.
Stone, aye. Motion will pass. Is that it for authorization?
Yeah, and the other appointments we'll have is the whole list of the other ones, but if you wanna do those in a little while, after we get through some business, that's fine.
Okay, that sounds good. One, the County Engineer, Rich Brum, are you back in the States?
I'm here, I'm here.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you guys doing?
We're so good.
Thanks for the reappointment, appreciate it. Two things. Working on budget stuff right now, as of right now, we have submitted the paving plans for one oh five West, even though we don't really necessarily know where we're funding's at, but we can, we have up until the day before the letting to actually pull a project if we have to. So we've got some time, I don't wanna waste a lot of time, but we do have some time to think, figure stuff out yet, and I've given Jackie an amendment to look at, you know, and I am working on priority projects like Jeff Heil had recommended we do here a couple weeks ago. Once I get through, well, we got budget stuff due to Jackie by the end of the week, so I'll have most of that stuff figured out. I've got a list of projects, you gotta put some pricing to it, so we know kinda where we're targeted, so. And then just since December's ended, we've got a new update on our farm-to-market and bridge money, so I'll be able to better fine-tune those numbers to know where we're at. Like, it changes a whole lot, but the one thing that did come out here last week was the, the bridge funding, the HBP funding. I believe if I read it correctly, they're allowing us, used to be that we're allowed up to three years accumulation and up to six years of spending. They changed it now to, and I think I mentioned that maybe this was gonna happen, but they actually, I think, now have allowed four years of accumulation, only four and a half of spending in advance, so. While we don't get a whole lot of money every year, it, it could help us to, to save up for some larger projects, but as usual, we save up for larger projects, that means the little ones don't get taken care of, so. We've got a few things to look at here for next year that are local projects that are gonna be somewhat, you know, minor, but still cost us money out of the local budget. We did, we did salvage that railcar pipe out of that drainage district project to the northeast of town here. We did purchase the pipe, we will be purchasing the pipe that they had intended to put in the road, but I've got a place for it, so it won't go to waste. We just ended up getting a pipe early to put somewhere else where we've got a small, a small box culvert or a small little bridge that needs to be taken down, and we'll probably just use that size culvert in that location, and then that'll free up one of the local smaller bridges that don't qualify for, for federal funding, so. Other than that, you know, been out here and there with the snow and everything else, but so far, it looks like we're gonna be okay for a while here. They will be out trying to straighten up some choppy roads, trying not to disturb too much of the rock that's out there, but some things need to be kind of addressed, so.
A little washboardy, didn't they?
Yeah, they, they got a little washboardy, so. I know that last week I had them go out where the wind tower people were. They were spreading out, they had spread some rock here late in the season, and we never got moisture to tie it down. In fact, it was after harvest, so I had them groom some of that down so that we didn't have any high ridges that would get potentially plowed off, as it turns out, we didn't get a lot of snow. One thing to mention about the, the wind tower project is that they've been coming to me and wanting to modify some roadway crossings. Some locations where they were gonna tear down their cranes and move them versus crossing over the roads. One location, they were gonna, they are, they, they intend to do, I thought I'd give you a heads up. I don't think they ever intended to cross Thrush Avenue with one of their top-out cranes, but you know, it takes them probably a, a good week to tear down and put back together, and that's just more time there in the county. They've asked, the roads are frozen now, I don't know that we'll see a lot of damage, but I've allowed them to, it'll be like a two-hour closing on Thrush Avenue between four eightieth and four eighty-fifth, I think they were saying. To cross over to get a couple more. Instead of putting sand on the road, like they did on the other ones, that really didn't seem to help. They're gonna use their crane mattings and their cribbing and stuff like that. I also told them, like with any other crossing, if they damage the road, they're gonna be fixing it, so. They're aware of it, but I mean, I think it, it, it speeds up the process to get projects done and get them out of here, and then we can evaluate things from there. Patching a road is a lot easier for us to deal with than to have them here for two longer weeks to tear things up, I guess, so. In that respect, I guess I gave them permission to do a small two-hour closure if they needed on Thrush, which means that, you know, cars are gonna have to detour around on the gravel for a short amount of time, but it's temporary, I don't think they need to do any more crossing there, and then they did. They had one other location on Spruce on the gravel where they were gonna cross the gravel road anyway, but because of the cold weather and the, the slippery conditions with the crane and, and having to fill the ditch in a little deeper, they opted to move it eighty to a hundred yards north, where they wouldn't have to fill the ditch, and they've already got a, a driveway access there with the towers, they would only have to do one ditch, and it's flatter. I said, as long as the, as long as the landowners are okay with the change, I don't have a problem with them crossing, it's just a relocation on the same road, so, just to kinda keep you up to date on what's happening with those, with those guys. They, obviously, when, when they cross, they still have to notify the sheriffs and the emergency responders and things like that, so they've been, as far as I know, they've been doing a good job of it. And I have been kind of poking and prodding on their, on their traffic control a little bit on these turnouts and these wider things there. They need to keep buttoning that stuff up. I've noticed a lot of traffic's been using those turnouts, and, and that shouldn't be happening, especially when they're bypassing stop signs, so. They've been, I, it seems like it's a weekly thing, or every two weeks, I gotta kinda remind them to keep up on it, so. Just so you guys are aware what's happening out there.
The, when they're crossing these roads, I guess, we need to make sure too that there's any tile or anything.
In that area.
Just, you know, in that drainage district, there's any veins anywhere that, none of that gets messed up either.
Sure, yeah, yeah. That's one thing, I, a lot of times, they're just following the, the crane paths anyway that they've already had pre-submitted, so. But yeah, that's true. We know, at least we know where the locations are where they're crossing, so if there's anything that does come up later on, there's certainly gonna be a way to track it if there is some damage, so. For the most part, I've had it, I've had it, it's been easy enough to, they've been easy enough to work with. We'll see, you know, everything's yes now, we'll see how things work in the end, but I don't think we'll have a problem with them ponying up when they gotta fix stuff either, so.
Alright, sounds good.
I did, I did have another call from Mr. Stainer on his car thing, and I just told him it was still pending. I thought that maybe the, I don't know what we decided on that yet, I know there was some emails going around, and whether or not we had Jeff write a letter or not yet, I guess that's just what I told him, so. It's still pending, I said I brought it up to the board, I said, seems like to me it should be an insurance thing, so we'll just see what happens.
Yeah, I, I assumed Jeff was gonna take care of that, but I guess we have to off the call and physically tell him just to make sure to do it, so. I'll call him when we get, when we get out of there meeting today. Alright. Anything else for Rich, Mark?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, thanks. Drainage. E thirteen lat three contractors' pay request and change order. Is that? Was that, this one? I was gonna go out there the other day, and I got called, I had to go back to Mason City, so I didn't make it out there to see how they were doing, but. I know they had a lot of trees that they were tangling with.
So there's three sets of each one of those, and.
I'm assuming John approved the change orders. Right? Fifteen thousand dollar change order. Okay. Taking motion to approve the contractors' pay request and the change order for D thirteen lat three.
So moved.
I'll second that motion, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion will carry. Alright, do we have any drainage claims today?
There's.
Three more, son?
Yeah, there's three of them. On both of them, 'cause we gotta get it to the contractor and.
Sorry.
That's okay, nobody listens to me. Exactly. Like Paul.
So we, we listen, but. Paul what?
Yeah. Okay.
Very good.
Yeah, there's not regular drainage claims at all? And no regular claims, right?
Nope.
Any reports?
Nope.
Any eligibility, your salary changes?
We were supposed to have two, but I don't see them, because I don't think the information got filled out. And that was from the assessor's office. So if they don't get approved, they don't get paid. So what do I need to do? Shelley has them ready for you, they need a dollar mouts on them.
Oh, when you get them done? Or, you know, the dollar?
They're upstairs.
Do you have the dollar mouts on?
I. Been on for two weeks, I gotta get my bearings.
Oh, that's hard. If you wanna get it figured out, we didn't get them done today yet.
Yeah.
Liquor license?
No.
The vacation road will later. North Beck Cove, Melissa. See her on here.
She's still on vacation.
I think she's supposed to be back today, so she might be busy doing, catching up. Resolution, twenty twenty dot oh one dot oh four dot oh one, construction evaluation resolution.
This is the one that you do every year, basically. If, if a building does get built, you get to jump through the hoops, so.
Master Matrix.
Yeah.
We retain the right to do it.
Retain the right to be.
Even though you still have no.
You can get follow guidelines.
Which we have to follow, and they have to follow.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, it's, you gotta beat the state if you don't.
So, I will make a motion to approve the construction evaluation.
Alright, our motion to approve construction evaluation resolution. The master metric system, I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry.
Do we need roll call vote?
Oh, resolution.
Yeah, I guess it's a resolution.
So yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, we'll take a roll call vote on that motion. Smitty?
Aye.
Stone, aye. That motion will pass. Resolution passed. Compensation Board Recommendations.
Here is that.
Alright. Recommended from the Worth County Compensation Board to increase Supervisor one percent, Attorney one percent, Sheriff five percent, Auditor Treasury Quarter three and a half percent. And this meeting was held back in December. My recommendation is we do not act on this until we get into our budget. Code says we don't have to act on it until we approve our budget. In March, right, that's when we approve the budget March, right? So that's my recommendation, because.
The budget first.
See if it fits into the budget, how it fits into the budget. We kinda, I'd say we made that mistake last year, approving it before we knew. So, that's, that's my recommendation. We can just acknowledge it for now, and we'll consider all this into the budget, and then once the budget is approved, that will set the guidelines or the, if there's, if there's the increase rate.
I kinda agree with that, I mean, you can put, they can put it in the budget that way.
Yep, they can figure it in this way, and if it works out, it works out, if it don't, we can make any adjustments then, so. Okay? Alright, sounds good. Leave that on the table for now. Twenty twenty-one ISAC Wellness Agreements. I did see an email on that wellness thing the other day, and how much participation, I didn't know what we did get for.
We got the five percent.
Yeah, I'd been gone, Shelley wasn't aware that this was gonna be done today, or that's what she said, so I apologize. So I'm not sure where people need to sign.
You need to sign right there.
Yeah, it's, we got the five percent last year, and then quite a few people did. Their, their gross two hundred bucks.
One fifty, I think.
It was one fifty, I believe. And hopefully, they're not making it any harder to get, meet those this year, do you know?
So, the meeting we had, it's going to pretty much, there's gonna be some changes, and hopefully it'll be positive changes, not, not many changes.
My big, I went on a couple times trying to do those self-assessments. And I could not get the paperwork to transfer, you know, on one of them, I just, I tried and tried and tried, and I just couldn't get it to. I tried screenshotting, I tried everything, and I just couldn't get it off, so I just wanted to say.
Yeah, I, I did a couple extra just because it didn't work for me either.
Okay, well, that's, you know, it didn't hurt, they were all good classes to listen to, but it was just like, man, just maybe man, I just finished it all, and was there, and this document was there, but I couldn't get it to go, you know.
Well, and I forgot I needed a form to get money for a physical, and I didn't take the form to my physical, so I didn't get squat, so.
Well, a little more after the January meeting, so, and I'll, I'll let you guys know.
Yeah, otherwise, I mean, it's all in that program, and I mean, it's there.
Right, I mean, if we can, if people keep doing this, and.
Worth County did a.
It's just money in your pocket for taking
Yeah.
two hours of your time, spread out over the whole year, and if you can come up with, you know, a hundred fifty or two hundred dollars, that's pretty good pay.
And I'm assuming employees are allowed to do it here on their time, is that correct?
That's the way it's supposed to be.
Should be, I mean.
Yeah. So it doesn't like be a do it after hours, or.
Right? Well, it'd be like a physical and.
Yeah, your physical, which, that's, that's health.
Most people.
And we just have to budget the hundred and twenty-five going forward, because our accident insurance provider will be paying the seventy-five bucks for the physical.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Who's that?
You'd have to ask.
Sorry.
I won't get in an accident, how's that?
That's a good idea. So we need a motion to accept the.
To, yeah, enter into the.
Wellness agreement?
Yep.
I will make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We want your not agreeing again, hopefully save us another five percent next year. Thank you to the employees and
Yeah.
elected officials that did participate in that.
There's a couple board members that did a lot of work.
And Jolene and Margie.
Jolie and Margie, they're two, I really recognize, they definitely stepped up and made contacts and pounded on people.
Correct. I'm glad they sent a few emails. I'm glad they sent out a few emails, 'cause it reminded me to get a few more things done, and
It's easy for you.
I did the physical and that stuff, right away, like April and May.
And it was like, ooh.
And then I kinda spaced it till October, and I did get it done, so.
Well, and you technically don't get a full year to do it.
No.
It's twelve, it's, um, Halloween, or ten thirty-one is the cutoff, so.
Right. But yeah, like I say, thanks to everybody that participated, 'cause that sure
Yeah.
sure helps us in the, in the long run, so. Alright, we'll jump back up to payroll eligibility verification. The assessor's office, take over the new employee, Andrea Miley. And to approve her pay, and then also to approve Joan Borland's pay. Joan is moving to part-time, right, correct, okay?
Yeah.
And Andrea will be full-time.
Make a motion to approve the salaries.
Alright, I want to approve the salaries, I'll second that motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Alright, Jason on this one?
He was playing his office last night, or talked to him last week, and we were throwing away stuff from a guy that retired, and stuff that had been in the office for like fifteen years.
I need it.
Yep, so.
Lucky they get to pitch it, we have to keep it for historical.
Yeah, so, but I, yeah, I did talk to him a little bit, like I said, he had um, it sounds like the deed is done, he had to make some adjustments on the, may have sent that back, and we were gonna have the deed. So then as soon as we get that recorded upstairs, we will deed them back their lot.
Yeah, building yours.
Yeah, and we're done, but the deed is done, I think Jeff may have it, but I'll, I'll find that out when I talk to him, as many of yourself. Another quarter is aware of everything, sounds like she's been involved, there's been contact about it, so.
Good.
Hopefully we can get this thing.
Roll with the band.
Or roll one, I guess, yeah.
Get a roll on us.
Get the deed written ahead.
You just wake up.
If this subdivision moves, so.
Yep.
People Service, Chris, are you all there?
Send this report. She's three on nine? I think that's what I would say. I mean, I'll mute that one.
I thought you said he's gonna be on there.
Well, it's something important.
Yeah. Chris Myers, you on there, or busy?
About hanging out.
Let's not be. Um.
I might have got called and some.
Right. I didn't know, or I didn't see there's some repairs made. Already seen a bill for, and then I did talk, but I talked to Jason last week also. That pressure relief valve, we were supposed to get in, well, due to holidays and vacations and COVID and everything, it's backorder, so hopefully we'll see it. So, yeah, but just, but he did talk to Young Plumbing, I think, and they hopefully will see it, so, and we'll install this, and we'll see it, so. And then Jason is going to start this week on water, wastewater rates out there. Right, to see where we're at with that, so. Um.
And water.
Water and wastewater, yes, both of them, and then we will, once we get that figured out, we'll set up a meeting with everybody out there, because we need to get come and go. On the percentage, which will probably back down to some more percentage a little bit, and I'm sure everybody else will probably stay about the same, but we can see, we won't see less, because come and go, we'll be taking more, so.
Good.
So that'll become down here shortly, too.
If, if you are on the phone and need to unmute your line, it starts to fix.
Yeah, I have an iPhone. Well, well, usually, you know, some of us have technology better.
I, I wouldn't say that about.
I, I wouldn't say that about you too often. Just enough to be dangerous.
Twenty-two reports. Uh, hourly wages.
Okay, at this point, that is thirteen twenty-five, last year we, um, left at the same. We don't use it for very much, it's just set every year, so I don't know if you wanna.
What's he gonna set for?
It'd be a contemporary.
Yeah.
Oh.
I think.
Like if he brings him in for helping with elections stuff.
Yeah. Doesn't that cover all that kind of stuff too?
Also.
If, if somebody chooses to use it, because people are all over the boards and that's.
Okay.
Right. Seems fair, but.
Yep. Make a motion.
Yep.
Make a motion that.
Yeah, it's mostly hourly wage rate the same, I'll second that motion, all favor I?
Alright.
I oppose. Motion will carry.
We're now one of the states of minimum wage yet, so.
Alright. Uh, official newspapers. Assuming the same ones we've had. North and Anchor and Manly Signal, correct?
Motion to keep the newspapers, official newspapers the same.
Okay, there's a motion to keep North and Anchor and Manly Signal as our official newspapers. I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All favor I?
Alright.
I oppose. Motion will carry. Uh, meal reimbursement rates.
That is thirty-five dollars per day, if anybody thinks, well, it, it hasn't really mattered this year.
No.
Travel.
For real, dude.
Hey, lobster, steak, carton cheese, especially for breakfast. Alright, I'll make a motion to, uh, give you the meal reimbursement rate at thirty-five dollars. Alright, there's motion to second, all favor I?
Alright.
I oppose. Motion will carry. Uh, liquor license.
Oh, yeah, doubled up on that too. Must need a drink.
Carol, double up on that?
No.
No. Jump that, whatever I said.
Between official newspapers and the double liquor.
Oh. Yeah, I went right to meal reimbursement, I was like mileage rate. Uh, I think currently we're at, IRS was at fifty-seven-five.
Yeah.
And it's now dropped to fifty-six. So I guess I'll make a motion to, uh, stay at the IRS by mileage rate, which would be fifty-six cents a mile this year. There's a motion to second, all favor I?
Alright.
I oppose. Motion will carry. Zoom mileage is. Alright, uh, department heads, anything on the COVID nineteen? Updates, I know we've had a few come through and out of here, but it seems like we've kept it.
Oh, we'll probably be, uh, we're back and forth a little bit here, just in the office, I guess, so. As far as out in the shops, we've been okay, it sounds like, so.
No, it sounds like if people are, they're doing their due diligence with it and, uh, trying to keep it out of here. If they are exposed or have it at home, so, which is fantastic, that's what our goal is and hopefully we can stay there with that, so.
Yeah, we're keeping our distances.
Perfect. Anybody else, department head, see the sheriffs doing, recorders doing, justice quiet?
I have a non-COVID.
Oh, yeah, I didn't put it on the agenda.
We'll do it next time.
Okay.
But, uh, also cybersecurity training is gonna start kicking up here in the middle of the month. And everybody will have six months or so to. Uh, I would stress that everybody do it, just because if we do have a breach or something like that, it does reflect well on our insurance, so.
Didn't you want pictometry in here too?
Pictometry, the next flight will be twenty twenty-one. I'm sorry, twenty twenty. Nineteen was the last flight, so it's three years.
Okay.
I screwed up. So twenty-two will be the next flight and, uh, they do wanna move us. Right now, we're doing, uh, nine inch in the, in the rural areas and three inch in the urban areas. They wanna bring us to six inch in the ag areas and then three inch in there. Uh, it's a little bit of a change, it's not much, but I did wanna do that with you guys.
The training on there too, or no?
No, no, I just wanted to let everybody know during the meeting that that training's gonna be kicking up again here, so. Jump the gun on that.
Is that new training then, or is that?
This'll be, we reset that every year, so, so then this qualifies for your election cybersecurity training.
Good.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully, double up anyway. Cool.
Did you wanna jump back to appointments now?
Uh, yeah. That is our committees, multiple, multiple committees, they're up everywhere.
Yep. We're only changing, I'm gonna stay on.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay on the.
Otherwise, it probably stays the same up to here, or you go.
Okay, first one is board.
You wanna give up on? Give it to.
Switch with somebody on this one? Yeah. Alright, first one's board of health?
Yeah, and I have not seen an application for Dr. Seemong.
Oh, she. She. Okay, I was trying to figure out if this term was up, I saw they were looking for a board, you know?
Yeah.
Send a notification, I guess. Jesse, Jesse's on, better let her know. Cause we have to. But they don't have to be an economy, I don't think anymore. Ken, Ken was, Ken got that from somebody, what it was, but there was something on there. Or they can be a ARPN, I think maybe.
Oh, probably.
So.
So maybe still.
Must be a physician licensed in the state of Iowa is what it, what it says in here. I guess you gotta look at six forty-one dot seven seven.
Oh, yeah, I read that one the other. So, right now, you're currently on board of health, right?
Yep.
Stay there with that position.
Yep.
And then if you wanna check into.
Awesome.
What the, check with Jesse and see what the situation is on that.
I'm sure she was planning on, I think, she didn't say anything at the last meeting, so. She just probably didn't realize her terms up.
VA is next.
VA is just, uh, Tom?
Um, Deb Herwire, they have three, they have a commission of three that have three-year terms. And Deb Herwire is the one that's up this year, I can't remember if I have her.
Did he say anything about being off?
Nobody does.
So then very much we just.
The way you guys, the way board, the board has always done it since I've been here is, I send out letters and if they don't want it, they let me know.
Right.
That's when you get the ninety-two-year-olds that say, uh, I think I'm done.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing, cause I think he passed away.
Um, alright, we'll leave the, uh, affairs, Veterans Affairs Board as is.
Yep.
Cause I think. Yeah, I've just got the Conservation Board going, I think, so far.
Okay, somebody did apply for that.
Yeah. And you're going with Mike Bodie for another year for lead commissioner. Technically, yeah.
Do it up.
Do you wanna do it?
Okay, the next one is board, county board of review, Jerry Hopperstead is up this year. It consists, it's a six-year term and consists of Dan Martenson, Mike Rumig and Jerry.
Guess if they're all willing to stay, I guess.
Jerry's the only one that's up?
Yep.
Yeah, if they're willing to stay, let's leave the board of review saying.
We just re-upped the medical examiner. County engineer. Conservation Board, hey, I didn't even see that. Jimmy got me the wrong person, Mark Lynn Flott is this year, so I'll check with him, but.
Okay.
You usually go with the same one, so. Good. County eminent domain, that's the not less than twenty-eight residents of the county to serve as members of a compensation commission.
Are we okay?
Annually.
Do we get enough members or enough, do we got twenty-eight to drop from? Close.
Twenty-eight, as long as nobody died.
Yeah, I thought we had gotten it filled, it took us a while, what did it do, those last two or three spots? So let's leave, uh, county eminent domain as is.
Yep.
County zoning commission, um, we have three that are up this year, it would be Harold Brunswick, Dana Thomas. And Chris Hagan. And, um, the other two that are on there are Jeff Borwell and David Quisley, which Jeff was a question mark. I don't know if that ever got resolved or not, if he's supposed to be on it or not, be on it.
Right, cause he has brought up that, he technically doesn't live in that township, he wants to be the other side of the road or something.
Oh, yeah?
I think he's on the line or somewhere, he's close, but in our zoning, it states that.
Can he move?
Everybody on the board, on that board must live in those townships that are zoned.
Right.
Since we don't have whole counties owning that, just to that, they have to live in that, and Jeff said he does not, he lives just outside of it. So.
Well, somebody living in Kentset wouldn't be in it either.
No. I say we leave it alone for now, just so we can still continue, cause obviously it's been going on for years.
Yeah. So that must have been set up along town, or is it state law or code, and maybe because.
It just must be in our, our zoning bylaws.
I suppose when the interstate went through, that's when all that got set up, because they had to be zoned, those three had to be zoned. Cause before that, I don't think we had zoning.
You almost think the board should serve from outside of that a little bit. I don't want to conflict the interest, but a little bit of, you know, a little less pressure from your local.
Right, you had an outside source or something.
Sure, I mean, Jeff was good, it'd be nice if he could stay out of there.
Which on the one hand, they care, but on the one other hand, they care.
Right, exactly.
Uh, let's leave it alone for now, cause that, what, probably what happened years ago is that just, you need to get people to fill a spot, so this is what you got.
Yep.
And nobody did that, Jeff had done the research in the books and saw that, that's all he knew about himself, cause he didn't know either. So, I guess as far as now, at least we leave that alone, so we still have a board to.
Yeah.
Continue to operate to the zoning.
Okay.
And we can look into that, so someone lives in town in Kentset, is that what?
I, I guess I don't know her address.
Who's that?
Dana Thomas?
No, she lives, uh, she lives by me, just a couple miles, a few miles from me.
Okay, maybe it's not Kentset then, I don't know.
No, she probably has a Kentset address, she's on this side of the interstate, or on my side of the interstate, I should say. Right on Wheelerwood, or corner of Wheelerwood and eight thirty-eight is where she, where she lives. She, she's in.
And we'll talk with Jeff, cause we, I gotta get together with him and Matt sometime here now, in the near future, so.
Then I did get Matt's information all set up. So he's.
He's able to accept the.
Emails and stuff.
Yep.
Okay, then the zoning board of adjustment is a five-year term and the person up this year is Marvin Bradru. Yeah, he's still out there.
Is he? God, he's up there in age too, isn't he? I guess if you didn't hear different, rather, let's leave it alone and he's up there.
Well, I, I won't, yeah, I won't know until I send out letters.
Okay.
Um, zoning administrator, you just appointed. Blood plant still out. Civil Service Commission, the person up this year is Marty Martin. And, yeah, that's one of your appoint, you have two appointees and the county attorney has one.
Marty there, unless we hear different, I'm assuming he probably stay in.
Okay, so your first board here is a, um, representative for Northwest Iowa Care Connections Governing Board. Is that the one that you wanted to switch to district?
Foot bot me.
Yeah.
Your one, right?
You wanna be the, yeah, district one.
District three is the alter, alternate?
That's Kenny's district, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, do that as the alternate. Cause I'm into it deep enough now, I'm able to stay on it.
Yep.
A North Iowa Juvenile Detention Services.
That's my list, district.
That'll be that district and, and your alternate.
Yep.
That's still good. Um, Central Iowa Detention Center. Winworth Vetco, District Three Supervisor, you wanna keep that the same?
Is that the advisory board?
Because the. That's right, that's the.
The executive board, we're all three, huh?
Right, it's advisory board.
Okay.
If it's advisory board, yeah, I'll leave that as.
I don't either.
District three and then like, one of us can always fill in.
Yeah, that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah.
If I've filled in.
Cause then is Melissa on that board or the director on that?
She's the director.
Yeah. Yeah.
County Judicial Magistrate Appointing Commission, that's every six years and that's this year. The supervisor appointments are Lauren Hoffman, Edith Hanell and Ron Miller. So I will send letters to them. Second Judicial is another one of yours. A, um, that's, that's District Three and then you're the alternate.
Oh, yeah, I can't.
Um, Iowa Workforce, that's you.
Yep.
A lot of you.
It should start slowing down this year.
Okay, so we'll leave that as your district. North Iowa Community Action is you.
That's me, yeah.
North Iowa Regional Housing is you and, um, then, oh, the alternate isn't expired yet.
What's the alternate, who's the alternate?
Chris Hagan.
Oh, okay. Let's flip flop that one.
To.
District three.
District three.
Yep, that's the one I'll trade for, for dental health.
Yep.
And then I, if, I can always fill in if Chris can't.
Okay.
Um, cause I've been on that one for a couple of years, they usually meet the last Tuesday of the month.
Yep.
I know Marlon had called him in the past, I don't know what he's doing now, but. Okay, um, North Central Regional Emergency Response Commission.
That's me.
Hasn't that, yeah, you and then you as an alternate, is that still good? Okay, then NiOCOG is you, you and then, um, Rick Shobrock, Cora Pullu. And Paul Moreland.
Yeah.
Okay, Transportation Board is a one-year term, you and Winworth Vetco, Melissa.
Yeah.
North Central Regional Emergency Planning District Committee is a three-year term, that's you. Whatever it is.
I don't know if I've ever been on one of those actually, never hit any emails on it, so.
Okay, and maybe, I don't know, emergency, is that something?
It's part of, uh.
Oh, okay.
For some reason, I think it is.
Do they take both those meetings together?
I think so.
Okay.
I think that's how that works. Now that you're, yeah.
Next one's NiOCOG Revolving Loan Fund, that's a one-year term, and Andy Helgason.
Is there no?
Yeah.
Keep, keep the bank around that?
Yeah.
Will do her.
Um, North Iowa Vocational Center is you, you.
I've never.
That's kind of been through Iowa Workforce Development, too, I believe.
They still operate under that, or is that a different?
It's a.
Names too, or?
Well, that, no, that's through Iowa Workforce Development, too.
Cause one vision is clearly, uh, in Cat Village.
Right.
And isn't dynamic change to something else? I, I've never.
I know, we, it's talked about, it's, they're always on the agenda. When it's been a local area, they were always on the agenda before.
For workforce?
Yep.
And they, they are, because they do employ.
People.
A lot, yeah, a lot of.
So then should that one be flip-flopped, or just leave it for?
I don't think they have a separate board, or there's no separate board.
I've never heard of a.
But if you're at workforce.
Well, what they're on there for is just.
Yeah, it could be.
Employment stuff, but if they.
Yeah.
But like I said, there should be a separate board meeting.
Could be, but I don't, they're never, well, who was on it before, anybody?
It's, it's you, you.
No, I mean, it's. I would say it should probably be, if it's part, still part of workforce development, which I think it is. Put, yeah, put this district on first and you can be the alternate.
I was looking through that the other day.
Cause things develop with the new board. Because things develop with the new board, and we're going to probably meet in a lot with Zoom, because it's a twenty county region now instead of seven, so it'll still, you know, like I said, they usually have other speakers speak and give a story, and, you know, how it's helped them, employment and stuff.
Okay, then Regional, or, yeah, Regional Two Transit Advisory Committee is you, you. Airport, oh, those aren't up this year, but your airport.
Airport, yeah.
Um, City of Manly Board of Adjustment, Marty Knutson's up, and I have heard he has agreed to continue. By force of his sister.
That's good.
Um, Man, City of Manly Planning and Zoning Commission, you're on that, so leave it that.
District. I'm Board of Adjustment, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Community Partnership for Protecting Children, that PAC four, yeah, yeah. District Three. North Iowa Children's Alliance, District Three. And, um, Homeward Housing Trust Fund Committee is District Three, and Jeannie Foss and Melissa.
I have, I have filled in on that once for Kenny, so, yeah, if that's one of those ones where if somebody else needs to go, just kind of.
Yeah, just have to have an appointment.
And that's a lot, like everything else, a lot of.
Yeah, you like that one, because they usually have a Pizza Ranch Clarion.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay. Yep.
That one doesn't have the ice cream machine, though.
I'll still take it if I need to. I'll take the hit.
Upper Cedar Watershed Management Improvement Authority Board of Directors.
That was three.
Yeah. And that's the last one, so.
Um, I do, yeah, that's perfect, but I do see some more that will probably be coming, I know the County EMS Board, I think, that's changed where, that'll probably be coming, I'll just, you can just kind of plan for that in the future, we'll point that as we get it, and then Shell Rock River Watershed, they're trying, there's some people trying to organize the Shell Rock River.
Kenny's been involved in some of that, hasn't he?
Yeah.
Is that part of the procedure and stuff there?
Um, they do eventually get together, part of South, but they want to go from where they meet this direction, um, which the Shell Rock runs through the entire county.
Right.
So, um, I've been in contact, and Mark Thompson has, was, uh, uh, attorney out of Shell Rock, and I think there, I can't remember who the other guy was. City Attorney down there.
Yeah, since we.
Yeah, so anyways, I, I did get involved in that a little bit, so as that starts to come through, and they build that, Mark will be involved, and I'll be involved.
Okay.
And I think we'll, we'll probably, I mean, if the board chooses to join that, it'll be the same kind of thing, but it's, this way, if there's ever watershed issues, funding, that kind of stuff, projects, it'll be a twenty eighty with whoever's along that line, but like I said, it does run through our entire county, so.
It's good to be.
And it did flood.
Yeah, it has flooded, and then you get the, any groundwater, you know, watersheds getting to be, water quality is a big thing, so you may see that in the future, too, but we'll, like I say, appoint that stuff when it comes through, so.
Now, County EMS, is that different than, because Bob Rush is appointed for, and gets paid like a hundred bucks.
Yeah, he's the medical, yeah, or EMS.
Or Emergency Medical Services.
EMS, yeah.
Yeah.
He is the director of that, and they meet quarterly, but State has put in somewhere that a supervisor needs to be a part of that board, so we'll basically just appoint it, and I will take that one.
You're.
And I've been, they've been mixing that in with the Chiefs meetings, EMS and Chiefs meetings, because usually everybody from each department is there all in one shot, and I've been participating in the last couple of those, so. But once they do officially do it, then that'll come through here, just as an appointment, so.
True.
Okay, so, that's it?
I think that's the year.
Motion to approve all board appointments.
Alright, there's a motion to approve board appointments, and I will second that motion. All in favor, I?
Alright.
I oppose? Alright, if we hear different on some of them, we'll.
Just as you go.
Yep. Okay, I think we're down to Supervisory Weekly, aren't we?
I think so.
I've been honest with you before Christmas, pretty much, so, I've been lucky.
Yeah, I haven't had any. I haven't had any, uh, official meetings, um, but my question is, and it's probably a Jeff answer, but, so are we good just to wait till the twelfth?
That's, that's where we're at right now.
Okay, we don't have to make any appointments or motions. Right. Well, I, I think, I think it's just like the presidency, where that's just going to be the deadline now.
Okay.
That we have to have somebody.
Because he was elected, he is gonna have to step down, basically.
If he can't fulfill, yeah, and then we go as a, we show a vacancy, then, and then we have to, the way I read it was, two and a half years or more, is above, there's an election.
Yeah.
That's the way I read it, so, is that how you?
I haven't read anything yet, I was getting other stuff done.
I'll, I'll chat with Jeff.
All I know is the first sentence in Vacants, or Special Elections or Vacants, oh, Special Elections, I think, is, what's different about a special election? Everything.
Yeah.
So, yep, so I guess we'll all right this out till the twelfth, and in the meantime, figure out what we would have to do between the twelfth and then, uh,
After that.
Twenty-fifth, basically.
Two supervisors to approve the.
We got it. With the election. I know. So. Maybe Jeff will know, have more info on that, too, so. Yeah, I didn't have anything either, so we should be good. Um, I know WHW will be throwing a meeting together. Send email, we was working on that. Um, I told her just to schedule it after the twenty-fifth of January, we'd have at least two.
Yeah, because she asked me how many. You're gonna have a full board.
Mike retired.
So, that one will be coming at some point, then tomorrow, our meeting with Brian, Group Benefit Partners.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Left fifteen. They're coming here, right?
They're coming here?
No. I think that's just for us.
Whoever wants to be there.
Yeah, it's a public meeting, but I don't know that.
We don't need the zone.
We don't need zone?
Nice.
Department that's come, so we can explain to.
Yeah, just the insurance thing, but if people feel the need. Okay, eleven fifteen. Okay.
Hold there, where?
Yeah. Alright, well, if nothing else, then, uh, I think I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second that motion. All favor, I?
Alright.
I, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.